Good evening Upper Darby. Welcome to the November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three combined work session and regular in-person and virtual meeting. The first item on the work session agenda is a pledge of allegiance by Primus Elementary School students at Advath, Govinda Hiram, Ava Anderson, and Kylie Kennedy.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excellent, excellent job. Thank you for leading that, students. The second item on the work session agenda is a presentation by Primus Elementary School Principal, Mr. William Rogers, titled Red Ribbon Week.
Good evening Upper Darby community, board members, and Dr. McGary. I thank you for another opportunity for putting Primus Elementary on the spotlight tonight. I'd also like to thank our amazing students that made it out tonight, Advath, Kylie, Malaysia, Joey, Ava, Anthony, and Tessa, to our staff and our Assistant Principal, Mr. Castertano, for being here tonight. Every year, the district celebrates the nation's largest and longest-running drug-free prevention campaign, Red Ribbon Week. The week highlights the importance of living a drug-free life. It presents an opportunity for parents, educators, and communities to reinforce the drug-free messages they share with their children throughout the year. During Red Ribbon Week, youths and adults around the nation pledge to increase their knowledge and make a commitment to live a happy, healthy, drug-free life. The Primus teachers design a week of celebration in themes that grow in stature each year. This year was no different. The biggest change, however, was a newfound perspective. As the week progressed, I was in awe of the overall participation by staff and students. I think at that point, I realized that the week was more than celebrating being drug-free. It is also about the unification of our wonderful community. Witnessing close to five hundred people dressed in red, or cowboy hats and crazy socks, or even PJs can be an inspiring sight. Moments like these make me proud to be part of this community. They remind me how powerful of an impact we can have as educators, and how strong we can be when we celebrate our unity. A special shout-out to Mrs. Noonan for helping orchestrate the celebration each year. Also, while watching, please keep an eye out for an especially crazy pair of socks that are featured. Please enjoy the video made by the amazing Jason Taylor.
During Red Ribbon Week, we concentrate on being aware that we have the right to say no to drugs. As a reminder, we have special activities set up all throughout the week.
On Monday, all students from Primus got Primus bucks of being drug-free and saying no to drugs. The buck stops here.
On Tuesday, we can shade out Sock It Too and give the boots to drugs by wearing cowgirl and cowboy attire, wearing crazy socks, and wearing sunglasses.
On Wednesday, we wear red because it's the best day. We walk out on drugs, and the band students will be rocking it out. We have our pep rally to say we're ready to say we're drug-free.
On Thursday, we can wear our favorite sports team shirt or jersey to team up against drugs.
On Friday, we get to wear pajamas. Wearing pajamas reminds us to chase our dreams, non-drugs. This symbolizes that participating this week, we promise to live drug-free.
Every day during Red Ribbon Week, we are reminded to be kind to our bodies, our minds, and each other by choosing to be drug-free.
Students are encouraged to bring canned foods to prove that we can be drug-free and that you can too.
Doing all of the week's activities unites us. The Primus school is one big family. We prove this by doing all the week's activities, and especially by our dance moves.
Primus family rocks! Primus family says no to drugs!
Mr. Rogers, I think you're on to something. You have something special going on there. Thank you for your work. Thank you for your leadership. The third item on the work session agenda is a presentation by Bywood Elementary School Principal, Ms. Kristin Meon, titled Highlighting Our ELL Program. Hi, Kristin.
I'm gonna follow that with the socks that Bill just gave me. They have Upper Darby in my face all over them. I thought I was the only one that liked to give out gifts, but thank you, Primus Elementary. All right. Good evening, School Board President Brown, fellow board members, Dr. McGary, administration, Bywood staff, Primus staff, and community members. It is with great pleasure that I stand before you today to introduce how Bywood celebrates diversity. In an increasingly interconnected world, it has become crucial for Upper Darby staff to embrace and honor the unique qualities that students bring to the table. Our staff understands the power of diversity and the positive impact it has on overall learning experience. First and foremost, we believe in fostering a warm and inclusive environment where every student feels safe and valued. We celebrate diversity by promoting respect, tolerance, and empathy among our students. Through various programs and activities, we encourage open dialogue and discussions that allow students to appreciate different cultures, traditions, and perspectives. I have to say, this makes me think back to when I was a second-grade teacher. Every March seventeenth, I would have a huge St. Patrick's Day celebration in my classroom. The kids loved it, and we were celebrating my diversity, my culture. I saw that the kids had so much fun with it, that I even had a parent that came to me and said, "We gotta talk. My daughter's birthday wish list says I wanna be Irish, because now a leprechaun's gonna come and give me gold." But I laughed back on that, and that family and I had many laughs that year about letting her daughter know that she was not Irish, but she could still celebrate it. And hopefully tonight, you will see that impact that it took on me as a teacher to realize the diversity that we should be celebrating in each and every one of our families, staff members, and students. So without further ado...
At Bywood, it's a real multicultural community. We have about two-hundred-and-twenty-one ELs. We have Arabic speakers, Bangla speakers, French speakers, Spanish speakers, of course, and also languages like Mayan and Quechua.
The EL students come to us with their rich cultures and heritage, and we embrace their cultures and celebrate them in various ways.
One of the things that is amazing and fabulous here is this newcomer program that we have. This is the SAIL, and then we also have the SOAR. And it's so wonderful for the children, because it's really integrated and touches on so many different subjects, like math, and science, and reading, and social studies. And we can have that all here for the students, and it's very interactive, so they can come up to the screen, and they can touch, and we talk about it.
One of the things that we do here in the EL program, we do both pull out, where we pull out students to our classrooms, but we also do push in. When I push into a classroom, I try and meet my kids where they're at and see how I can best help them if it's math. You know, I might get up in front of the whole classroom and help with some keywords and important numbers, and with ELA if it's a story. I really like to draw upon their backgrounds and their culture.
Researchers have found that when a student's language and culture is validated in a safe environment and is encouraged in the classroom, it gives them an opportunity to develop positive academic literacy.
So we use learning targets throughout all of our building. If you go into any classroom, you're gonna see that learning targets are in every single classroom. When they come out here to the trailers, to EL or Reading, MTSSS, they're still gonna see learning targets. The importance of learning targets is the repetition that the students have. They see the same vocabulary, they learn it, they memorize it, they know it. So when we have first or second graders that can explain to you the word identify or demonstrate, they're doing that, and they know that, because they're using those words with learning targets. In the beginning of the school year, I put up a learning target that said I can teach Ms. Woods a word in Spanish. I had a small group of second graders, they were all Spanish speakers, I had five boys, and we had the best time. They were teaching me something from their culture. And they all gave me a word that you had to roll your Rs, which they thought was hilarious. So by having a learning target and starting our school year with them teaching me something made a significant impact in our relationship.
When you talk about or ask them questions about their culture, or their language, or where they're from, they just, they light up. You know, it makes them feel like you're interested in them, you value them, and you respect their families and culture and where they're from.
Last year, Dr. Manfree put out to the teachers and staff in Upper Darby a program through the Midwestern IU where we could get our EL certification, and I decided to go ahead with the program and received my certification at the end of last year, and I am a new EL teacher here at Bywood.
I am a brand-new EL teacher here at Bywood, and this experience has been amazing for me, because I studied abroad in college, and I worked with children in Peru and in Spain, and coming here really touches on all the diversity and the culture and the language that I had in other countries. And now I have it all here, right under my fingertips, and it's just an amazing place to be an EL teacher.
And it's a great program, because it allows all of us here at Bywood and in the district to better serve our learners. As our community of EL learners grows, we need to meet them where they are as EL teachers.
I am an English-language learner-teacher, and I'm teaching English, but it is important that our students, our families, know that we embrace their culture, we embrace their home life, and the diversity that we have here at Bywood.
Ladies and gentlemen, that is just the beginning. Beyond the classroom, we strive to provide our students with the opportunities to actively engage with diversity. We organize multicultural events, festivals, and assemblies that showcase the rich tapestry of cultures within our school community. These events not only foster a sense of belonging, but also encourage students to explore and appreciate different traditions and customs. Having said that, please mark your calendars for Saturday, April twentieth, from twelve PM to two PM. All are invited to come celebrate our students and our families and the wide cultures that we have in Upper Darby School District. Now, I would like to bring up four of our Bywood students to read you a poem in their language. Mohammed, Muhammad, Wijen, and Muhammad, please come to the podium.
The poem in English was written by Carolyn Woods, one of our EL teachers who's going around giving out the poem, and these children are going to read it in their own languages, and we try to get it translated to as close as possible. So Mohammed Hafiz is going to read the poem in English.
I get on the bus and look around. Is there anyone like me that can be found? I found a new friend with a great big smile. Maybe we can sit and talk for a while. We look at each other, not sure what to do. How exciting I get to meet someone new. She tells me her name, but I do not understand. You see, I'm over here from another land. That is okay, I want to make a food. We smile, laugh, and giggle on our Bywood bus.
This is Wijen reading the poem in Arabic. Now Mohammed Muntaser is going to read in Bangla.
But in conclusion, as we know, this would not be a Bywood presentation without some gifts. I mean, you guys know me by now, I don't come ever empty-handed. So can I have some of my Bywood staff come up? We would just like to say, Bill Rogers and I just want to thank you from the bottom of our hearts for all the improvements that you have made throughout this district, and we could not be more proud to be Upper Darby Principals in the Upper Darby School District. Thank you so much, and this boardroom is amazing. Thank you.
Kristin, you know I'm partial to Bywood. It's one of my schools along with Highland Park, so I always have a wonderful time, and you invite me to everything, so I try to get there as much as I can. So thank you, and Ms. Newby, and Ms. Scully, for always making me feel welcome at Bywood. Hopefully you'll invite me back, and I can still come visit when I can. Thank you. Dr. McGary said no, but we'll handle that between us. Thank you.
Ball first, Kristin.
The final item on the work session agenda is the recognition of twenty-five years of service by Dr. John Council Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources.
Celebrating twenty-five years of service is a significant milestone. It's huge, it's a great achievement for anyone who's able to accomplish that. This evening, we have the pleasure of recognizing two members of the Upper Darby family who have dedicated twenty-five years of their lives to this district. First, Lisa Petronella is a special education teacher at Drexel Hill Middle School. Lisa is unable to join us this evening, but we know that it's important that we recognize her years of service with the level of appreciation that it deserves. Lisa has spent all twenty-five years of her career in Upper Darby as a special education teacher at Drexel Hill Middle School, where she taught students in sixth, seventh, and eighth grades. During this time, Lisa has been involved in the district athletic program. She was a volleyball coach, a softball coach, and she coached lacrosse. Lisa credits her twenty-five years to thoroughly enjoying her work with the Special Education Department and the students at Drexel Hill Middle School. Lisa also asked me to share that the staff members are like family there at Drexel Hill Middle School. Hey, please join me in applauding Ms. Lisa Petronella's twenty-five years of service with Upper Darby School District.
Congratulations to you. Joining us this evening in person is Ms. Catherine Papasarius.
Papasarius.
Papasarius. I'm sorry. Better known, but she's better known at Bywood as Queen Kathy P., as represented on the shirts. So Kathy is celebrating an incredible twenty-five years of dedicated service to our district as a building assistant and office assistant at Bywood Elementary School. Kathy is a true royal. Kathy graduated from Upper Darby High School. Kathy's three children graduated from Upper Darby High School. Kathy's son is a physical education teacher at Primus Elementary School, and her daughter-in-law is a special education teacher at Westbrook Park Elementary School. It goes without saying that Kathy and her family are truly committed to our district. Kathy credits her twenty-five years of service to the love of her job, love for the students and the love for the people that she works with. In Kathy's own words, "The people at Bywood take care of me." Bywood is a family, and Kathy is evident by the crowd that's here with the T-shirts that your colleagues adore you as well. Kathy shared with me a quote that her parents passed on to her. "Do your job, do the best, do it to the best of your ability." This statement continues to motivate Kathy today. She has clearly gone above and beyond to invest in the students in our district. Kathy, your quarter-century of service is an inspiration to all of us. Thank you for the past twenty-five years, and we look forward to twenty-five more awesome years. Please join me in celebrating Kathy on this incredible achievement.
Before we call tonight's meeting to order, Dr. McGary, will you please outline the public participation procedure, sir?
Yes, thank you Board President Brown. And for everybody who's in attendance this evening, tonight is a board meeting, legislative meeting, so it's comment-only. If you are here in person, you can come to the microphone at a specific report, provide your name, address, and you can comment on that report. The board will take that comment into consideration. Comments, both general and for specific reports, are three minutes long. If you were here for general comments and not related to a specific report, you would have had to have signed in by seven-thirty. Your name should be on that list, and at the end of the meeting, before we close out, there's general comment. The board will call on you in the order in which you signed in. In-person comments first, three minutes, provide your name, address, and again, you can make your comment. Tonight is not a back-and-forth, it's a comment-only meeting. If you are virtual, there are two ways that you can participate in the meeting virtually. You can provide your comments to boardmeetingcomments@upherdarbsd.org. Again, provide your name, address, and the specific report you'd like to comment on. If you wanted to be general comment, it would have had to have been received by seven-thirty PM and labeled "general comment." And you could also phone it in at six-one-zero-seven-eight-nine-seven-two-zero-zero, extension two thousand. Again, provide your name, address, and the specific report you'd like to comment on, or if it were for general comment, receive by seven-thirty this evening. In-person comments first, and then we'll follow that up with people that are both virtual and/or phoning them in. Board President Brown, happy to repeat that again if you need me to.
Thank you. Well, you leave it to your discretion. The regular in-person and virtual meeting of the Upper Darby School District Board of School Directors will please come to order. There was a closed session on October twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three from five PM until five-thirty-one PM for personnel matters, and this evening from five-thirty PM until seven-twenty-five PM, seven-twenty-eight PM for matters to be discussed within the limitations for closed deliberations as prescribed by Pennsylvania Act ninety-three of nineteen-ninety-eight. For this evening's meeting, there were personnel and litigation matters. Roll call, Board Secretary, Mr. Rogers, please.
Dr. Hague.
Present.
Mr. Des Noiers.
Present.
Mr. Neal.
Present.
Mr. War Savage.
Present.
Ms. Murphy-Morrissey.
Present.
Ms. Williams.
Present.
Ms. Mitchell.
Present.
Mr. Fields.
Present.
Mr. Brown.
Present. Thank you, Mr. Rogers. The district posted this evening's agenda to board docs at least twenty-four hours prior to the commencement of this meeting. Is there a motion to approve that previously posted agenda?
So move. Second.
Thank you. Are there any amendments to offer?
There are no amendments.
Thank you. The agenda has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying aye, oppose, and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye, abstain, and state your name for the record. The motion carried. The minutes of the combined work session and regular meeting of October tenth, twenty-twenty-three is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying aye, oppose, and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye, abstain, and state your name for the record. The motion carried. The reporter to secretary, Director Williams, please.
The reporter to secretary is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying aye, oppose, and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye, abstain, and state your name for the record. The motion carried. The reporter to treasurer, Director Neal.
Thank you, President Brown. The report of the treasurer is in the hands of each board member, has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying aye, oppose, and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye, abstain, and state your name for the record. The motion carried. We will now have the report of the student representative by Jade McCants and Fernando Santos.
Good evening, Board President Brown, members of the board, Dr. McGary, and community members. This past month, Jade and I had the opportunity to visit three of our elementary schools, including our alma mater, and to also interview a group of students from the high school. This past month, I had the opportunity to meet with the principal of Garrettford Elementary School, Mr. Bridges, to get an update on Garrettford's start of the school, to get an update on Garrettford's start of the school year. Visiting Garrettford was a full-circle moment for me, walking back into Garrettford and seeing many familiar faces from my time there. During the interview, Mr. Bridges informed me of the positive feedback he has received about the new clear-touch boards from both teachers and students. He stated that they catch the kids' eyes, and that their interactive features motivate students to participate more in class. Additionally, they hosted a great back-to-school night with a large number of parents attending. As we toured the grounds, Mr. Bridges also informed me of the new paint job the school received, and said there had been no problems with heaters and air conditioners. I also shadowed Mrs. Clayton, my fifth-grade teacher. While with her class, I asked students how they liked their new playground. My question was answered with excited smiles and raised hands, waiting to share their appreciation for the new swings and jungle gym. Afterward, I joined them in their fall parade and watched the rest of the kids participate in the crowd. All of the students seemed to have a blast. In addition to the parade, Garrettford held various events during the month of October, including the Michaela's Voice Assembly. Michaela's Voice is a nonprofit organization that teaches students that students with disabilities can do almost anything everyone else can. During the October bullying prevention Parents Night at Garrettford, families shared their ways to prevent bullying in the school community. Lastly, Garrettford hosted a fundraiser at Chuck E. Cheese and a costume bingo night on Friday, October twenty-seventh. I also visited Hillcrest Elementary School and met with the principal, Mrs. Campbell, and Assistant Principal, Mrs. Gonzalez. During the meeting, we spoke of the positive addition of the new clear-touch boards. They stated that the boards make teaching easier due to the screen's mobility and ease of internet use. They informed me that Hillcrest recently received a new paint job, and that each year there are new improvements made to the school, like the rephasing of the playground, which they said attracts the kids' attention and makes races safer. Hillcrest held the Fall Parade as well, which went great, and the students enjoyed it immensely. They've held other events, like the skate night at the Marple Sports Arena, movie nights, and a dance last week on November tenth. The fourth grade recently went on a field trip to the River Benz Conservatory, and the first grade went to the Philadelphia Zoo. For many parents... For many parents, this was their first school field trip since COVID. Hillcrest also held PBIS assemblies to recognize students of the month for their trustworthiness and citizenship. Hillcrest also continues to invite winners to the home and school association meetings to receive further recognition. Mrs. Campbell and Mrs. Gonzalez believe this creates a bridge between parents and home and school for support. Lastly, back-to-school night had an excellent turnout. Many parents highlighted their kids' excitement for the new school year.
This month, I had the fantastic opportunity to go back to Westbrook Park Elementary School. Mr. Comfort and Ms. Minnecker brought a yearbook photo of me from fifth grade to make me feel old and nostalgic. Westbrook Park students are doing well academically. The beginning of the year's testing went well, and the students are flourishing. Ms. Minnecker recently joined the Westbrook team, and she is doing an excellent job as well. The clear touchboards are now up in all of Westbrook's classrooms and specials, including gym. They recently rebuilt the playground in both the large and mini recess areas, installed new fencing, blacktops lines, and painted the main hallways. There are still some things to work on, but things are looking up right now. The fall parade was wonderful. Mr. Comfort said it was great to see all of the parents and kids having fun. They also had conferences before Thanksgiving, a busy home and school association, an upcoming winter concert, and a monthly PBIS assembly. Westbrook Park recently held their back-to-school night. It was a success, with roughly 400 people present. Mr. Comfort and Ms. Minnecker reported it was great to welcome kids to the new school year, and it was even better to see so many parents come in and join those activities. After my interview with Mr. Comfort, he gave me a tour of the school. So much had changed, but even more was still the same. I was recognized by my old teachers like Ms. Sheffield, Ms. Teagan, and Mr. Fazio, and I saw rooms such as the gym, the library, and the art room. It was a beautiful experience, and I hope Westbrook keeps up the good work. Also this past month, Fernando, Dr. McGary, Dr. Alloway, Ms. Simone, and I met with a group of students to talk about the current situation occurring in Palestine. During the interview, the students informed us about what is happening in Palestine and how it has affected their school and personal life. Adjacent to the meeting, Fernando and I met with the students again to get more detailed information. During the discussion, the students explained they did not want to push any agenda or force a statement, rather, they wanted to inform us about the mistreatment they have endured inside and outside of school, and to ask for support during this time of need. One of the students we spoke with has family in Palestine and a loved one that was shot there. The students expressed their disappointment in the lack of community awareness of what is going on in Palestine and Israel. They shared an example of more common community awareness based on previous world events such as Russia and Ukraine. Students said although they don't feel unsafe in the community, they don't entirely feel safe due to the hate crimes that have occurred in the United States, for example, the fatal stabbing of a six-year-old in Chicago. Some of their teachers have discussed concerns about students wearing their flag. The students have also had conversations with their parents, and they were told either just to get in and get out, or just don't go to school. Their parents feel they don't have a voice because this isn't their country, and they have a feeling the freedom of speech doesn't apply to them. Ultimately, the students just want teachers to remain neutral and not pick sides, as well as to receive support from high schools/school districts with things such as fundraisers, posters, et cetera. This isn't about politics. This is about human rights and morals. What is happening is inhumane, and our students want this to be known. Their goal isn't to push a pro-Palestinian views. They just want the people in leadership roles to be educated and not treat them any differently. Thank you.
Thank you. Great job, as always. Really appreciate that informative report. The budgeted personnel and enrollment reports have been made available to the board and the public and are recorded as part of the record. No vote is required. We will now have the report of the superintendent, Dr. Dan McGary.
Fernando and Jade, you're taking over these meetings. Your reports are more in-depth and longer than mine, so I should probably shrink mine in the future. I do want to say to the two of you, very mature of you, and thank you for joining me and Dr. Alloway and Mrs. Simone in that very long meeting that we had with those students. Obviously, just for the members of the audience, we received some emails from some students at the high school who'd expressed some concern about what's going on. And much like what's going on in the world, there's this understanding of you can get to these jobs and power or leadership sometimes corrupts people, and they think that they have all this freedom to do whatever they want. And some of the students felt like we had more control and power over the press and over how communication is happening. So there's this concern about perspective and feeling safe and feeling supported, and I think it was important that you were there, asked student representatives to listen to those students, share what I thought was very, very well-done, very articulate, very smart commentary that they brought to us about how they were feeling, and wanting to be supportive of everybody in that conversation. So I thank you for that time that you guys joined us, and Dr. Alloway and Mrs. Simone as well. I think it was important to meet with those students to hear their perspectives. I know that the board was emailed as well, and I just wanted you to know that we did take the time and have those conversations, and it turned into very positive, productive conversations. We also followed up with some staff in the district, teachers that are Jewish teachers who've expressed some concerns as well. And so we'll have ongoing conversations with our students and our staff about the human crisis that's going on, just in the world in general. So good evening, Board President Brown, and good evening Royals. I always wish that the staff would still be here, because I will say, Bill, as a former Bywood person, congratulations to you and to your team, but also to Kristen and to Janet. I just think, and Mr. Castertana, hello. Having been at Bywood and seeing those students and seeing Mrs. Galley, it's emotional. I think I looked across the room and saw some people getting choked up. When you get to these jobs, it's harder and harder, but you realize when you're at Bywood, and for those who are there, I was the principal of Bywood, seeing Kathy P. and seeing the kids that come through, it's an unbelievably important job, and great work is happening in those schools every single day. And thank you to the two of you and to your staff for that leadership. Although, Bill, I think she threw down a challenge to you and the Primus faculty about showing up a little bit. I don't know, I'm just saying. Kristen tries to really bring a lot of competition to these meetings, but congratulations to both of you and all the work that you do. I also want to take a moment to thank Dr. Meredith Hague and to Mr. David Neal, who's here. I just want to say, where's Dave? You know, when you're a superintendent of a school district, especially in 2023, it's been very, very rare and difficult that meetings go as professionally or as focused on students and achievement as this board does. And that's not for saying that we don't have our disagreements. We do. But I've always appreciated, even in the most difficult times of COVID and everything else, those Friday 5 o'clock calls and late nights, the professionalism of this board has just been outstanding, and I can't thank you enough that the success of this district, we're sitting in this room, you're pushing us, you are very persistent about specific topics and ideas. I've appreciated your passion. I will miss you. You bring a lot to me. You question me, and you keep me on my toes to make sure that I'm thinking about a lot of different topics when we present this. And David, there's a lot of things I could say, some of which I probably won't say publicly, but I will say that as a board member, I will miss your candor, your sense of humor, and the fact that there is definitely times, a filter is not your middle name, and I appreciate what you've brought to the table, and I will miss that as well. And I hope the two of you stay in touch and continue to have high expectations of what we're doing here as community members, and don't lose sight of that. I want to say congratulations, too, to the board members who are staying with us. I said I'm sorry for you as well, but also congratulations to Desiree, Damian, and Mr. Fields. Don, thank you so much for continuing on this journey with us. It's truly a partnership. And to someone who whispered to me a minute ago, he thinks this relationship might change a little bit as we go forward, joking around, I do appreciate the journey that you're going to be going on, and I hope our relationship continues. Education is all about relationships. That's what makes it special. It's about the people, and it's always made Upper Darby special. So to all of you that are staying with us on this journey, thank you so much. And to the two new board members that will be joining us, Ms. Williams and Ms. Glenn, thank you for joining us on this wild ride. It's a lot of time and effort, energy, for very low pay, no pay, and I appreciate this board and this commitment that you've had here for a long period of time. So, Ed, more than anything, I know you're going to continue to do what you've done, push forward in the township level, and I look forward to that partnership and that relationship. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I also just wanted to say that before Thanksgiving break, I'm grateful for these relationships, and I'm grateful for the dedication and support of our staff and our team that's here. For our report this evening, I just wanted to focus on a few topics. I want to focus on the success of our band and Mr. Doug Ballard, who's sitting here patiently waiting to be recognized, and just provide some updates on facilities improvements. But right out of the gate, to Mr. Ballard, thank you. I've said this to you before, I'm going to continue to say it to you, when we've had to replace legendary or skilled, musical, talented teachers in this school district, they are tough, tough shoes to fill. And you've stepped up with unbelievable passion, courage, and enthusiasm for what you do leading the band. I remember standing in August, out there on the backfield, and you're standing up on that rickety, hopefully still in good shape, scaffolding and driving the band forward, and we'll show video a little bit, but since you've been here, you've been nothing but dedicated. You love music, and that pours through with what you do with your kids. You don't only love music, but you're a critic of music. And I think being a tough critic is why our kids are so successful with you. Doesn't mean you're not without your difficulties as a teacher, I'm sure as well, but we take that with a grain of salt, that it's wonderful that you're here, leading us and leading our kids. And I just want to share, again, Doug, what you've done with the kids and the parents in this school district with Dr. Alloway at the school. As I understand it, again, the Marching Royals defended their title of the U.S. Bands of Pennsylvania State A-Class Champions. This is the third year in a row, third year in a row, right, that the Royals have defended this title. They went on to continue their championship journey to Nationals on November 5 and achieve fifth place in the 23 U.S. Bands 4A-class National Marching Competition. They also received the Best Percussion Caption Award. The Marching Royals earned a 74.8 at their first outing and received first-place score of 86.5 for the title "State Champions" and the caption award for Best Overall Music, Best Overall Effect, Best Overall Visual, and Best Percussion. Mr. Ballard shared that he was elated, I believe that's the word that you used, and that they received the highest score in all of the A-class division. In fact, they outscored 13 other bands. When I look at the numbers, their overall score has increased significantly, with a final score of 91.6 at the national championship. I know that for Mr. Ballard, he's a very difficult raider himself, having scored band competitions for years, and we know we were bringing Mr. Ballard in, and I won't name the other school district, that when he was the middle school band director, he got the middle school bands to such a high level that it was an issue with the high school band where he previously worked. So I know the pressure that he can create, which is positive. But as I understand it, the difficult raider that you are, that it's exceptionally rare for a band to receive, these are your words, correct? Exceptionally rare for a band to receive a caption award outside of first through third place. And the Marching Royals earned Best Percussion with a separate score of 96.5 overall, over all of the other groups, all the other groups that even scored higher as a total band score and outscored you in that competition, but you still managed to outscore those bands in band percussion. I could tell that you're proud about that, and so are we. Please join me in congratulating the Marching Royals on another successful season. We will be joining Dr. Alloway, Mr. Ballard, the team, at an upcoming meeting at the high school, because there's over 50 or 60 kids we'll be recognizing today, 80, yeah, including parents, so we couldn't fill the entire place tonight. But please join us in recognizing. Doug, come on forward. So that started way back in August, when the Phoenix was unveiled on the back grass field, and I know all those long nights of practices. I also understand that the weather was not great for anybody over the fall. A lot of events were canceled. Two out of the six competitions were rained out, Doug, and I appreciate the perseverance and the effort that goes in, hours and hours of time, going to leading those kids and getting them where they are. And thank you for building the band back up. Thank you for your leadership, and hopefully we have four championships. I know this time last year, we celebrated the second, and now we have the third, so congratulations to you again, Dr. Alloway and the team. And Mr. Lashley, I know he's a big supporter of the arts here as a supervisor as well. Congratulations to you again. And to the students. Facilities updates. Just wanted to provide you with a very brief update on some of the upcoming facilities projects. We are hoping to begin the Drexel Hill Middle School and Beverly Hills Middle School Auditorium renovation projects during the summer of '24. We will also begin to work on the Drexel Hill locker room update, they're the original lockers, and Westbrook Park's heating and ventilation AC projects. Again, it's not new AC, it's just fixing what is old and outdated, and we're doing those projects this spring and summer. The high school auditorium renovation project will start in December, this December, through May of '24. Secondary school libraries, BH, DH, and the high school we renovated in the summer of '24. We continue to also move forward with the Clifton Heights Middle School project, and we are hopeful to award bids following winter break. We have so much to be grateful here in Upper Darby School District, and it takes a total team to do what we do. Thank you to our staff, our students, and our families. And Board President Brown, I want everybody to know, I hope they have a happy Thanksgiving. I look forward to working with you and everybody else after Thanksgiving break. Congratulations. That concludes my report for this evening.
I think the student representatives are giving you pressure. Your reports are getting better and better and more comprehensive. We will now have an update on the October 24, 2023 Education and People Services Committee meeting. Director Neal will read the summary.
Thank you, President Brown. So the Education and People Services Committee meeting occurred on October 24. There were four items that evening. The first item, a board action required. This evening was a proposal for planned instruction, the financial literacy and counseling class. Mr. Finch and Mr. Schwartz proposed the addition of a college and career planning course consisting of a marking period of financial literacy and a marking period of guidance. The second item was a proposal for a pilot program of financial literacy and counseling. Mr. Finch again, and Mr. Schwartz proposed a plan to conduct a pilot in the second semester of this school year. The course would support the students' college and career planning, as well as introduce basic topics in the area of finance. The third item, which also requires board action this evening, was a college board Accuplacer site license. Mr. Finch and Mr. Schwartz again proposed that Upper Darby School District as a site for administering this college board Accuplacer assessment to the Upper Darby High School students, beginning with the next school year. This helps, this is an online assessment which is used to help colleges assess student readiness for introductory credit-bearing college courses. And the last item was two policies, Policies 216.1 and Policy 251, which both require board action this evening. The topics were supplemental discipline records and students experiencing homelessness. There were no public comments on these four agenda items.
Thank you, Dr. Neal. We will now have an update on the October 24, 2023 Finance and Operations Committee meeting. Director War Savage will read the summary.
We only had one agenda item that evening, and that was in regards to capital projects. It was an update, and it was informational. There were no public comments.
Thank you, Director War Savage. A detailed summary of the both committee meetings, including public comments, if any, can be found on board docs. Next is the Instruction and Curriculum Report. Director Vice President Fields.
Thank you, Board President Brown. The Instruction and Curriculum Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstained and state your name for the record. The motion carried. Next is the Personnel Report. Director Mitchell.
Thank you, President Brown. The Personnel Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. Before I move for its adoption, I just want to highlight a few things in this report. First, I would like to acknowledge our retiree. We wish you a safe and healthy retirement. I want to congratulate those who are new to the school district. We thank you and welcome you to the Upper Darby School District family. There are some administrative changes in tonight's report, so I want to congratulate Kamisha Simpson, Nina Tyer, on your new positions, and Dr. Council on your new position. And I want to welcome my friend, Dr. Norelli, back to Upper Darby School District. I knew you'd be back. Yeah, we have to approve it, but I'm still congratulating you ahead of time. So with that being said, I move for the adoption of the report as stated.
Thank you. Although, are there any comments from the board?
I was so sad to see Miziah Kono's name on, on this list. Though she has told the students from the beginning of the year that she's 106. I, I, yeah. I, I need to know her skincare regimen because, not because I believe she was 106, but I, it came as a total shock to me that she was eligible for retirement. Very, very sad to see her go. You know, that kind of sense of humor plays very well with certain third grade boys that I may know. Yeah, she's, she's really been wonderful and I feel like we, we only just got to know her. And very sad to see her go, but happy that, that she's going to be often enjoying her retirement, I am very sure. And so I, I wish her very well and at least we get the rest of the year out of her. So, yeah, thank you.
Although, Dr. Norelli, even though you weren't in the district when I served on the board, I, I would like to welcome you back into I, what I believe and will continue to be a very positive working environment. So I, I hope you enjoy your stay in Upper Darby for a very long time.
So I'll say my comments. I know Dr. Norelli very well, Dan Norelli very well, and he's, he's exceptional. And I've seen the two Dan's work together. So I'm excited about them teaming back up and on behalf of our students and, and staff in Upper Darby. So I know we didn't vote on it yet, but I just wanted to express my congratulations and for Dr. Counsel and his new role. He's excited. We've had a couple of conversations about that. And I know he'll flourish in this role, this new role as he, as he has all others. So started off as a dynamic principal and he's still flourishing. So thank you for that and Kamisha and everyone, congratulations on your new roles. Any other comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public?
Lee Jordan, 90 Pilgrim Lane. I guess this is a Dr. Morelli, Norelli fan club here. I saw your name in the minutes and I just wanted to come up. And I don't think I need to say anything, just hearing from the board comments. But Dr. Norelli, when you left the district, it was a huge loss. And the fact that you're, you know, hopefully coming back after this vote in a couple of minutes, I'm thrilled. And the same as I was when Ms. Tyer came back. You know, there are really people that make an impact on the district and both of you did. And coming back, we're just going to be stronger than ever. So that was my comment.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carries.
Not, not that I'm anti where you currently work. But I know when the board came and they wanted us to continue to, to move forward with the work and the culture and the climate and the equity initiatives in the school district. When Melissa moved on to Colonial School District, we took the opportunity to contract out those services with Dr. Holland Sims, who's one of the best in the state. And she's become so important, I hope she's paying attention to tonight, that, you know, she's, she's big time now. And she's worked with Dr. Counsel and Ms. Simpson. And so when the board came to us about these decisions, I thought it was kind of a no brainer to move in this direction. To J.C. and to Kamisha, thank you. Look forward to the, the work that we can do collaborating with our community as we saw tonight, the kids, diversity that is this school district, retaining our teachers, helping our teachers navigate this, our parents and our families. It's a very serious and important role. And I appreciate your willingness to take on that opportunity and that challenge as well as with Kamisha. It's a lot of work and I, I really appreciate this board making it a priority and having the courage to stand in front of others when others are not taking this opportunity on and making it a serious job this board has. And I appreciate you taking on that, that opportunity to do it. It won't be easy. So thank you very much. To Nina, good luck. I'm only kidding. Thanks for taking on a lot of the different roles. And you've come back to the district and, and working now in HR in a role that you've worked in other districts. Your background's unbelievable. So I appreciate your professionalism with our staff and our benefits and, and the team here in the district and taking on that opportunity. And to Dan, it's been years in the making, hopefully bringing you back home. You gotta get rid of that sweatshirt though, or that jacket. He was, he was at another board meeting, but, but you know, compliments to you. I'm looking forward to it, to the team, bringing everybody back. It's really going to be awesome. I appreciate the board having this happen. Thank you very much.
All right. Policy reports are next. Director Des Noirs.
Thank you, President Brown. There are two policies undergoing a first reading this evening. As a reminder, no vote is required, but I would like to, I do have a very brief summary of the updates to the two policies. So here goes. There are changes to two policies for consideration for a first reading during this meeting. As a reminder, these policies will be presented at a subsequent committee meeting and then must undergo a second reading at a future board meeting prior to taking effect. The two policies impacted are 203.1 HIV, which was formerly titled HIV infection, and 314.1 HIV, which was formerly titled HIV infection. 203.1 is for students, 314.1 is for employees. The district policies governing HIV are undergoing district initiated updates. The updates result in language consistent with Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, or CDC HIV related guidelines and ensure that, to the extent possible, the district follows CDC guidance in HIV prevention education. That concludes my report.
Director Des Noirs, did you do the second, second reading ones as well?
The policy report, the, the policy report second reading is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board?
I have a comment.
Yes.
So just a brief update, a brief mention of the updates to the two policies. Policy 251, students experiencing, sorry, let's get to the right page. Policy 216.1, supplemental discipline records. These having to, these, the, this policy change implements requirements that the district be notified when a district student is found to be delinquent. The rule addresses requirements for the following. The information can, to be contained in the notice to the school, acknowledgement of the notice of information, procedures for transfer of information upon the student's transfer to another school, and maintenance of the information separately from the juvenile's official school record, and the limited purposes for which the district can use the information. And this was due to a change in state law. Policy 251 is also undergoing updates. And this has to do with, these changes were recommended by the, by legal counsel and have to do with students who have an IEP, who may fall on, who fall under the category of students experiencing homelessness, foster care and other educational instability, and the graduation of requirements for those students. That concludes my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carried. The Supplies Report, Director Ward Savage.
Thank you, President Brown. The Supplies Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carried. The Facilities Report, Director Murphy Morrissey.
The Facilities Report, the Use of Facilities Report and the Donation Report are in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for their adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Are there any com, yes.
I, I just wanted to thank all the entities that gave code donations to our kids. Sorry, I just want to make sure that got acknowledged.
Thank you, Director Mitchell. Are there any other comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carried. I think we're up to the Finance and Budget Report, Director Dr. Hig.
Thank you, President Brown. The Finance and Budget Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carried. All right, that takes us to our collateral assignment reports. We will start with the Delaware County Community College, Director Vice President Fields.
Thanking Board President Brown. One of the main jobs of a board liaisons is to interview candidates for the Board of Trustees of the Community College. So there will be a vacancy available, so there will be interviews occurring in the next few months. So that's the one thing, and I can't remember, did we already report on the dinner? Did we already do that? No? Okay. And so Board Members Brown, myself, Williams, Desiree Lamar Murphy. It was a long time ago. Director Mitchell, we're all at the dinner for the Community College. It's, this is once a year to all the participating members.
Sponsoring.
Uh, sponsoring members of, of the Community College. It was a, a great presentation, a lot of positive things. I'll leave stuff from, for everybody else to mention. But I definitely want to mention that the Community College Annex, they did say two and a half years. So if you've got a freshman at the high school, they should be able to attend the Community College down the road by the time, at the very least, they get to their senior year. And there's other things to mention, but I don't want to leave that to anybody else who wants to talk about it. But that's what I have and I'll leave it up to the rest.
I just wanted to say that during the dinner, they had several represent, student representatives. We had some fabulous representatives who spoke highly about the program at Community College and also all that they, all, all the education they gleaned from here at Upper Darby. So it was good to hear from them.
Real quick, the, there was a student there who was a previous student of ours and I actually was talking to him about the Accuplacer presentation that we had had the previous week. He told me a story about, he didn't think that he was college ready. And his course was already administering the Accuplacer as an end of course exam. And that is how he ended up going to the Community College. And he is going to be transferring to Westchester for the final two years. And so that was a success story and I was happy to have something to talk to him about. But he was a, a student of ours, so.
Thank you for sharing it. Thank you. The, the dinner was, the, the presentation is always informative. The food was delicious as always, but the students did give some positive feedback. We were well represented as far as the number of our students that take care of, that take advantage of dual enrollment and, and even just attend Delaware County Community College. So it was always good to see that our sponsorship is going to good use.
They, they did discuss two programs they have for teachers and nursing. Basically that they can, that students can start at high school. They can start these, these programs to, to work towards their nursing degree and work towards their teaching degree. And the thing about those fields, and I know for most of people here, I don't need to tell you about teaching, but definitely for nursing, you kind of figure out where you are in that first year. Like it separates the people that are serious about it versus the people that maybe need to find something else. And I think it's great that, that students have an opportunity to do that while they're still in high school. They can figure that out and it's, it's kind of critical. And, and they can also determine that they might have a huge passion and love for it. And now we've caught them in their junior or senior year at high school and they can come back or go into the nursing field or something like that. It's really important, really important. So that's, that's what I have.
Thank you. Thank you for adding that. I think that's all for the Delaware County Community College. We'll go to the DCIU, Director Mitchell.
Thank you, President Brown. The DCIU Board of School Directors met on November 1st. This is one week of the year that I don't have a DCIU meeting tomorrow night. We already had it last week because of the way November fell, so I'm, I'm very happy. No commitment tomorrow night. But anyway, we, we met for our regular business on November 1st. It was pretty much regular standard business, but we did approve a lot of opportunities for students to attend different conferences throughout the country, actually. And I did want to highlight that 30 of our cosmetology students will be attending with adult chaperones to the beauty show in New York City on March 5th, which, so that's just one from our school. But for anyone who isn't familiar with the DCIU, I would highly recommend checking out their website. They've been really launching a lot of really cool programs for kids. One is Girls in STEM and they actually have like a, a learning lab. It's sort of like a club type thing. Of course, you have to get to the DCIU in Morton. But we do have a few Upper Darby students already attending that. So just check out the website because there are just these little cool opportunities. They, they just came up with some sort of like, I, I don't really, maybe Damian knows a little bit more about this, but like gaming, but it's like a thing now. What is it called? Yes, esports. So they have a whole esports room and I, I think there's a club associated with it. And so kids from the community can sign up for that. And I'm hoping one day we have something as cool as that here at Upper Darby. We will, I'm sure. So I would just definitely encourage you to look at our, at the website at DCIU.org. There are programs for pretty much every student there, so thank you.
So Director Mitchell, so I actually was in the room where that's housed in this DCIU. I was getting professional development. I mean, they have gaming chairs that you can sit in. I mean, these computers are huge, okay? They're, I think they're even the alien ones. But it was like, it, it was so fancy in there. I was like, why aren't we doing our professional development over here on these computers? Because it, it was just really fascinating that they had that available. So I, I witnessed that, that room and it truly is remarkable, the technology there.
Yeah, it was a grant, just so everyone knows.
Thank you. Any other comments about them? All right, we'll move on to, next is the Legislative Council, Director Ward Savage.
Thank you very much, President Brown. I let the Legislative Council know in advance of last week's meeting that I wouldn't be in attendance. I was waiting for them to provide a summary. I didn't receive one at this point, but I did want to point out just a couple of things that I sent in the full legislative update that I did send to the board the other day. One of the things I wanted to bring to everyone's attention was some legislation being considered. I see SB 801. It stands for Literacy Achievement for All Pennsylvanians. This bipartisan legislation would create a screening process to identify struggling readers and implement plans to prevent children from falling behind. It will include a three-stage approach, evidence-based reading curricula, a universal screening beginning in the first 30 days of school. And by looking at said screening data, intervention plans will be designed and implemented. These steps will put the necessary supports in place and put all children on the path to reading proficiently by the third grade. Another thing I want to point out that you may hear, I'm not sure if Dr. McGary would like to go into any more detail about this one, but on my list, I have it here as HB 1507 in regards to flexible instructional time in school. The legislation provides, and this is for consideration, it's not the law yet, provides increased flexibility in the way school districts, intermediate units and career and tech centers schedule instructional time in Pennsylvania to allow for increased interval, individualized education, student support and more focused workforce development. Current law requires all public kindergarteners, elementary and secondary schools be kept open for at least 180 days and 900 slash 990 hours each. for at least 180 days and 900 slash 990 hours each school year. This particular consideration may change that requirement to 180 days or 900 slash 990 hours of instruction per year. Dr. McGary, did you want to give the public any kind of details on, you know, how they can better understand that being a possibility?
Yeah, sure. I mean, first thing we're going to do is, in November, we'll have a conversation with the home and schools and share this information and get their feedback on these topics. That's November 20th at 5:30, I think, right, Damian? That's the, that's the next meeting that we have. So, we'll put these on, put these on the agenda, share it with our home and schools. We'll talk about that information as well as other topics related to transportation, the school year, the school hours, and other things that are coming up as well.
And the one other thing I just wanted to point out on the legislative report I thought was interesting was actual new legislation, HB 1778, creating the Pennsylvania Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights. Amends the public school code in safe schools to insert definitions for bullying and school setting. Provides for policy relating to bullying and provides for parental responsibility in bullying. Provides for parental, well, they repeat that sentence again. And outlines procedures for reporting and receiving a report of bullying. Includes cyber harassment within the procedures to address bullying. Inserts definition for cyber harassment. All those pieces of legislation, if you're interested in seeing them supported, I would also like to see them get funded. So, make sure that if any of these things interest you, that you go and talk to your legislators, and let them know it's something that you would support and like to see funded. Because a lot of these things sound like potentially good ideas, but without the appropriate funding, seeing as how we are still underfunded by a rolling $20 million, and that's compounded, we just want to make sure we dot our i's and cross our t's so we're not kicking another can down the road. That ends my remarks.
Thank you. Next is the Mendel Hall Tyson Scholarship Committee Report, Director Hig.
We haven't had any meetings, but I just did want to say, I wanted to thank the Board for giving me this assignment. It's one that is really just a pure joy, and you get to hear about the amazing things that our students do. And I also wanted to give a sort of a quick shout-out to Steve Bell and the rest of the leadership of the, of the committee. They really do a great job, and, and it's all, you know, people who are very committed to the community, and I appreciate all of their time, and again, appreciate the Board giving me this very, very fun assignment.
And from what I understand, if I can ask a question, I know it's such distinguishing students. It's really hard to make a decision, right? It's so competitive, and it's tough to make a choice because the students are so stellar. Is that correct?
Absolutely. I mean, it's really splitting hairs, I think, between the top students. But luckily, the, we have counselors and lots of people giving, giving their input, and I think there's no question that we could easily give, you know, dozens of students these kinds of awards and find them to be very, very deserving. We're at least lucky that we have the kind of community support that we have, that we're able to give as many awards as we can.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you for serving on that committee. Next is Home and School, Director War Savage, anything to add?
I think Dr. McGary kind of stole my thunder with that one already. We do have a meeting for the district-wide home and school coming up November 20th. But was there anything else, Dr. McGary, that you wanted to add to that?
No, like you said, the legislative updates, the important information, we'd like to bounce those ideas off the home and school. Back, you know, obviously, I have my opinion on some of those things too, as you do, but we want to hear from them. Topics that we do want to talk about at that meeting will be transportation-related. We just had a meeting with special education parent advocates in this district about the concerns with transportation, how long it's taking kids to get to and from school at the elementary level and in some of the secondary schools. So, we're going to have to make some difficult decisions unless there's a changing of transportation on a national level. But that's a topic we're going to talk about with our home and schools, so. And they had a meeting without us, so we'll hear what updates they have for us as well, resources and support that they need. But I look forward to that November 20th before the holiday conversation.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Dr. McGary. Thank you, Dr. War Savage. Next is Technology, and I'll, I do have a report regarding that. National Engineering Week was in mid-October, and my employer, Lockheed Martin, is one of the companies among many who celebrate that, and they do invite high school students to come and expose them to STEM careers and let them see how we do things in engineering and computer science at a large aerospace company. And we had 12 students. I think we had the most, we had maybe 10 different high schools that participated in that that came to Lockheed Martin and King of Prussia, and I think we, Upper Darby supported that. And we had 12 students, or, we had the most students of any school. And they, you know, they all came up to me and was very proud to be there, and we had multiple presentations and workshops. So, they really got a lot out of it based on my, talking to them about it. And I was very proud that we had so much representation. I was able to poke my chest out and say, that's my district. So, it was really awesome, really well-received. So, thank you. Thank you, Dr. McGary, for supporting.
I don't deserve any credit. I think Dr. Kelly, Dr. Alloway, Mr. Finch, the team was able to pull that off. I just said that, you know, we need to make this happen, and they did. So, they deserve all the credit for that.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Alloway and Simone for doing it. I think I was sending you, firing off emails trying to get that locked down, and thank you for indulging me in making that happen. So, thank you to the entire team for that, and Mr. Finch as well. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Next is PSBA. So, I think we have a number of items. I'll toss it over to my Vice President to start, and we'll talk about the conference that we attended and also the delegate assembly. So, I'll toss it to you first.
Right. So, Board President Brown and I attended the PSBA Conference Assembly. And so, this is a statewide conference with all the members of the Pennsylvania School Board Association. It was in the Poconos. I attended about, I would say about six, one, two, three, four, five sessions. It's various workshops and, and, you know, discussions about different topics. I attended one on renewable energy for underfunded schools. I had a lot of hope. The particular example they were using was a district that had, you know, four acres they didn't have anything to do with, so. You know, which I think if we had such an, if we had that much space, you know, I think we could come up with a couple of things, but these guys, they, they put solar panels on them. And, I mean, it was great. It's a district that looks a lot like Upper Darby, and it was great for them. And, you know, they're able to kind of share out the, the energy that's generated through the community, but really, really interesting stuff. But right, right from the bat, where I was like, oh, we can't do that. Because we, because we don't, we don't have like kind of, that kind of space just kind of lying around in Upper Darby. Building community supports and partnerships, that was really productive and really gave me a lot of ideas. School safety, we do a lot of the things that was in the school safety presentation. Building productive relationships between Board and administration, that's always, for me, that's always something to kind of attend to see, you know, what discussions, what practices should Boards kind of put in place so that the, the School Board and the administration are working very well together. We, we always work really, 98% of the time, we work very well together, but there's always a little bit of room for improvement. And you don't ever want to just kind of sit on it. You want to just keep working towards it. And then there was a speaker, Donna Hicks, who gave a presentation on treating people with dignity to restore broken relationships. And I thought it was funny that in his speech, Dr. McGary mentioned how important relationships are in education and, and getting things done in a school district. And it was, it was really informative. Ed and I both attended that and really enjoyed it. We both bought her book. She has some stuff in there that related to healthcare, which my wife's deeply involved in. So, I had questions for her, which really annoyed Ed, because I kind of held up the line there a little bit for the autographs. But it was really informative and, and really, really good stuff. And it was, I got a lot, it was great to meet people from other districts in the state. And one guy was telling us about a school district, it's in central PA, it's in the heart of the T. It's like, it's 200 miles from anything, or something like that. And, you know, there's, the school district's one building, and there's really nothing they can do about it. You know, they, they can't, it's 200 kids, right? They can't send them anyplace else because they're not close to anyplace else, and, and funding's pretty tough, right? And it's just, it's just interesting to hear some of the stories that the people have and, and the solutions they come up with and, and the practices they put in place. Really, really neat stuff, so, really enjoyable. And that's all I have for, for my side.
Sounds good. So, I'm also part of the governing board for PSBA, so Don, Don did not mention, or Vice President Fields did not mention it. I got him into some extra meetings and some dinners and things like that, so he was very happy.
Ed committed me to other activities as well, so.
Right. So, I won't be as long as Don, but I'll just talk about some of the sessions that, no, no, I'm not. But some of the sessions that I attended, there was an early bird session on sharing a vision for student success before, during, and after. And the nice thing is, all of these presentations, for all of the sessions that we attended, they made it a rule that they have to put those presentations in the app. So, I downloaded them all, so I'm going to send those along to my Board Members as I normally do. I haven't yet, but I do have them all, and I will certainly share them for, not only the ones that we attended, but for all of the presentations. One night, I just downloaded all of them. Another one that I attended was the education, I'm sorry, creating a 21st century learning environment. So, that one I paid particular interest to, and there's some things in there I think Dr. McGary would be interested in. There was a government affairs panel where, you know, we had a chance to talk to some legislators, and they talked about funding, because we know we're severely underfunded. Several of us have mentioned that tonight. So, that was interesting. Another one of note was the Mental Health Matters, Stop the Stigma. So, we know about the stigma with mental health when people don't seek treatment. And, you know, we have to particularly pay attention to that with students, as educators, so that was a really good one. And I'll just highlight one more that I attended. Oh, Cyber Security Learning for School Board Directors. So, I was sitting in the front row for that one. I'm a cybersecurity engineer, so that one definitely caught my interest. And there's some things that we all should know. You certainly don't have to go into as much depth as I would, but there's some things that everybody should know, and that presentation, I think, would benefit the entire Board, particularly new School Board Directors. So, the last one was Teamwork Makes the Advocacy Dream Work. I just love that title. And there was some really good information on, on how to advocate across the Board for, you know, parents, students, everybody. So, always a worthwhile conference. PSBA does a great job, and they, you know, they put together these wonderful sessions. So, I think it's always beneficial, and we always come back motivated and charged with sharing some information to make our district, our wonderful district, even better. So, that's it for the Leadership Conference. I'll miss attending that. It was also the Delegate Assembly. What was it, last Saturday? Yeah, it was last Saturday, and the PSBA Representative, Director Williams, Director Desnoyers, and myself, right? I think we were the ones that attended that, and that's where PSBA has a legislative platform, legislative platform at all of the districts that are part of PSBA. There's 500 school districts in Pennsylvania, and I think they have 496 of them are members of PSBA. So, that's where they establish what the collective agenda and platform is. So, Director Williams and Desnoyers, I'll let you talk about it a little bit if you would like.
Sure. I'll just speak briefly on it.
Sure.
So, we basically vote on changes to the legislative platform. Some of the things we voted on or talked about were public notices, technology, future ready index, just changing the language regarding COVID and even charter school reform. So, we just spent that time kind of reviewing the language for that and then just voting on it. So, that's basically kind of what all three of us did as representatives for PSBA there.
I was just going to say, there was a bit of controversy at the meeting because the, there was a motion to, to make us take a certain action, and it was ruled against, and the, the ruling against was debated. And anyways, so, I think we haven't heard the last of that.
Right. In other words, Director Desnoyers is saying, some people are very passionate about the things that they care about, and when they're on the losing side of a vote, they will advocate and they will, they won't let it go. Like, they'll keep trying to rephrase it and reshape it to try to get to the end result. But it's the majority rules, as with anything when you're voting, and they politely listen and indulge the person, the School Board Director, and then they...
Yeah, the, the issue that the losing side, as the losing side saw it, was that the entire body was not allowed to vote to determine if the majority ruled.
Right. So, I won't, we won't get into the details, but it was controversial. They was passionate, and then the parliamentarian did move on to the next item, so. That's it for PSBA. Anything else to add? I think we covered that. Policy Liaisons, anything, Director Desnoyers, sir?
Nothing out of the ordinary.
Okay. We'll move on to Communication. Directors Hag and Mitchell.
I'll just say, continuing my little farewell tour, I'll say that Ms. Buford was relatively new in her role when I came on the Board, and as a communications liaison, I've gotten to work with her a little bit more. And I just, it's been great to see how the communications game has really, really stepped up. I don't think anyone in the community could possibly ever complain about being uninformed about what's going on. And, and I think we know that, that not every, many, many districts around us really don't, don't reach the level that we're at in terms of the timeliness and the accuracy and the, and the completeness of the, of the communications. And I love that, that Ms. Buford is always looking for new and better ways to, to keep the community informed, and I really appreciate it, and it's been fun working with her and, and Ms. Mitchell as well, of course.
Thank you. Director Mitchell?
To say thank you to Dr. Hag for all of your work. You're very, very, very organized and diligent. And I just appreciate you so much. I'll miss you on the Board.
Thank you. Thank you both for your work on that. Those School Board Communication newsletters that you guys send out are very informative and really represents our voice, so thank you for that. Next is the Upper Darby Arts and Education Foundation, Director Murphy Morrissey.
Yeah, so it's really no report. They just have a meeting on the 21st, next Tuesday, at 6:30 for their Board.
Okay, thank you. That takes us to old business. Is there any old business from Board Members?
Just that I'm about to become old business, so. Sorry. I don't mean, I, I just want to say a few more things. So, so when I joined the Board, my kids were still in preschool, and they're, of course, third graders now at Westbrook Park and loving it, thriving, loving Mr. Comfort and all of their teachers. The pandemic hit after our, it was, I think, our third voting meeting. We had the meeting, and then, and, and we were trading emails, and Dr. McGary and I were trading like websites that we were looking at. Have you seen this one? Have you seen that one? And it's not, it's not an if, it's a when, and all of that. Anyway, and then we all got this sort of trial by fire of, of, you know, virtual meetings and, and we, you know, instead of, instead of, you know, twice a month meetings, we had weekly meetings, and sometimes it felt like daily meetings. And through it all, it's just been amazing to see what, what we have here. The, the team that we have here is just truly incredible. Ms. Mitchell called me organized. I think people have used other words. Let's, I'll, I'll say that I sometimes have a tendency to lose the forest for the trees, and I really appreciate how much the team has really tolerated that. And, and that I think we're, we're so lucky to have such an amazing leader who is so talented at seeing the forest. And I, I wish sometimes I thought I, that I had that kind of yin yang in other parts of my life as well. You can ask my family. I'm not easy to please, so I, I, I really can't say enough about how impressed I have been by this team. The organization, the dedication, the professionalism, the knowledge. I mean, you all are doing just such an incredible job. It's been really fun to get to know all of you as people and just totally amazing to see that, honestly, the miracles that I think you're pulling off here. So, so thank you for this opportunity. I've really enjoyed it. I am in my third semester of teaching an overload at my job, and so, it's, it's time for me to remember that I have a paying job and, and do that, and, but I will still be around, and I will still see you all, and I'll stop talking now, but thank you.
Thank you. Any other old business? Yes, go.
Meredith and Dave, you guys are coming to the committee meeting, right, in two weeks? Okay, I'll save my comments for then.
Hey, I know. She's giving like a farewell. Like, she's like, this is it for me. When I walk out of that door, sayonara.
I'll be here in two weeks, but we'll be discussing like, you know, whatever else.
We'll be discussing you and David. Any other old business?
I just wanted to let the community know, we were talking about the band and orchestra earlier. They have a fundraiser coming up called WinterCon on December 2nd. It's going on from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. It's going to be scheduled in multi-parts. One part is a vendor craft fair, well, one is a vendor anime gamer fair with a bunch of cosplaying and that kind of thing. Definitely my gig. The other half of that is going to be a classical craft fair, a holiday seasonal kind of thing. There's also going to be a pancake breakfast, and from what I hear, they are working on having a special guest be, playing the role of Santa. I have no clue who that will be, but if you go there on December 2nd at the high school at 10:00 AM, you'll find out.
Thank you very much for pointing that out. Thank you. Appreciate it. Yes. Yes.
Thank you. I want to extend my thanks to the district staff for allowing democracy to happen on Election Day, and, you know, a lot goes into making sure that the facilities are ready for that, and in a community where we can lack adequate facilities for people to come in and vote, we appreciate the schools being used. I would request in the future, the board consider making Election Day as an off day for the district, because we did have some parking issues at schools where staff was there and voters who were driving in couldn't find parking, and that may deter them to vote on Election Day. So it's just something to think about on future calendars as we, as you take a look at that. Thank you.
Thank you. One thing I'll mention too, as I regard, since you mentioned it, and I bugged Dr. McGary, I got a text message like four in the morning for someone that wanted to open a polling plate. They was concerned, like from in the past, and I forwarded that text message along when I got it, and to my, to my surprise, he did respond a little bit later, but he did respond. He did, he did respond a little bit later, but I didn't hear from the person anymore, so it was definitely open in time. So thank you for that, and I thanked you all, you know, on via text message and everything already, but thank you.
Yeah, look, Dave's already making demands on his way, on his way out. We have one more meeting, but I want to say Marvin Lee and Timmy Leaf, who helped get that organized, it's not an easy thing to pull off, the elections and the voting in the school district here, and our custodial staff, I think, was there even earlier than your text message, they were there, ready to go. The person was at the wrong door, but they got in easily. That was at Bywood that morning. But Marvin, thank you, and to Timmy Leaf, and to Craig, there was a lot of work getting, making sure that we didn't have any delays and that. And Dave, there's a lot of people who want days off. I'm not the guy to give days off, but the guy we just hired loves to give days off.
He also does snow days.
Yeah, snow days, Villanova, Flyers.
I remember that.
That guy gives out days off like it's, like it's Pez.
We can hire you, we can hire you in Philly.
We'll, we'll talk about it.
It'd be a light drizzle, Dan and Riley's like, it's closed. And it'd be a blizzard, and Dan is like, this Dan is like, it's open.
And remember, I'm in charge.
I was going to say, McGary, you're still in charge.
All right. I think that's it. We are now at the time for the public hearing. We will call Upper Darby School District residents who sign in to address the board in the order in which they signed in, followed by emailed and phoned comments. We would ask that you come forward, give your name and address, and present your comments in the three-minute time limit. In accordance with policy nine zero three, the time allotted for general comments, both in person and submitted comments, will not exceed one hour. With that said, we will begin with Susan Parker.
I've shared the history firsthand information since nineteen eighty, I guess. I was involved actively in my kids' education, and I started when I was pregnant with my son, who's forty-two, because of what was happening in my neighborhood. Now, Bywood is my school, and it saddens me to drive past it and see all those classrooms, but I'm kind of here now, even though I brought you up to date and give you the history, but, you know, I was on the board of the Y, and I was on the board of the Girl Scouts Program Committee of Southeast Pennsylvania, and we always had five-year plans. That doesn't seem to be anybody's thing anymore, but for the, I'm here as an advocate now for the people in my side of the township. We have Parkly Square, Park Lane East, Bradford Terrace, you drive down Long Lane, there are all these apartment buildings, all, all row homes. So it's the most densely populated part of the city, part of the township, and it's, has two schools, one with four portable classrooms, and then Stonehurst has just one, but Cardington people, you talked about transportation, Carding, it's very pricey to drag them all across the township, you know? So I'm going to show up every week, every month, and just remind you, I would like to see some equity in the school district. When, when children look at a school, the pride, some of the campuses are gorgeous, and it's, it's like this part of the township is completely forgotten, and it's the most densely populated. It has no parochial schools, unlike, you know, St. Alice, you know, some of the ones that are still open, people have another opportunity. So I'm going to come every month, and if you don't want to see me anymore, please make a plan that includes Bywood, Stonehurst, and Cardington. You need to start thinking about these people, and, and as far as busing goes, you could save a lot of money without dragging them all across the township, and at least now they're in the township as opposed to being in Glen Olden for eighteen years. But it's approaching fifty years that Cardington was torn, was closed, not torn down, but it was closed almost fifty years ago. So I'd say that it would appear, maybe from someone outside, thinking that you're kind of not noticing that end of the school district, and I just think that I would like to see a plan that included the things that need to be done for that side of the township. See you next month.
Lee Jordan, Ninety Poggin Lane, Drexel Hill. I've been carrying this article around with me from the Philadelphia Business Journal. Mike Kelly was interviewed on the development, he did the architect for all the buildings. It's a really good article, I'll give it to Craig just to pass it to the board. President Brown, congratulations on your next journey. It was because of the school board where our friendship began, so instead of Tuesdays, I'll be seeing you Wednesday nights now. And I just want to say, this room is beautiful. I voted in Iran McElementary School, it looked gorgeous from what I saw inside. I mean, I don't know what the finishing, when the floor and stuff will be done, but I know, Dr. McGary, I emailed you about doing an open house hopefully in the spring so the community can see. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Happy Tuesday. Dr. McGary, Board President Brown, and all the board directors, Upper Darby School District staff, Jay Fernandez, and the Royal Community. Keeping in the spirit of thankfulness, I came on a perfect night. I wanted to be here at the last meeting, but my schedule didn't allow, so I just wanted to come in personally and say thank you to each one of you for all of your work and your dedication, your reports, the school, all the improvements that's been going on at the schools have looked amazing. When I drive through here, I really feel proud to be living here in Upper Darby. So I know that I was here last fall, and I gave a laundry list of all the things that I would like to see improved at Stonehurst Elementary, because that is the school that is in my neighborhood, and it is being done. It looks amazing. When I look out from my deck and I see the lights out there, I see the improvement on the playground, I hear the enthusiasm coming from the kids, that I know that President, I mean, Principal Chesman and Vice Principal Patrick is doing an amazing job with their staff. When I'm walking around after school, I see how they're interacting, so it's been a great fit to place those two there at that school. So again, I just want to say thank you so very much for all the improvements. Mr. Marvin Lee, thank you so much for all the constant communication, and also taking the suggestion with leaving the gate open so that we don't have to keep repairing the gate. So it looks amazing, everything looks great, and I just wanted to come in person to say thank you to everyone.
Thank you, Michelle. Thank you so much. Really appreciate that. I think that's our last, oh, any online comments, Ms. Buford?
No, sir, there are no online comments.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion for the adjournment of the meeting?
So moved.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Have a great night, everyone. Please get home safely.